And please call to order the Seminole Airport Authority for Tuesday, December eighth. Roll call, please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Gary Howe. John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
To move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If we could now please call to order the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Gary Howe.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Showman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could now call together the Utilities Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Gary Howe. Dee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move it to adoption. Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Showman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If we could now please call to order the Seminole City Council. Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watland.
Here.
Susan Hammond.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Gary Howe.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, could you please give that a second? Sagada misia mishka hagayigotai pum kasapke de quiche rimado mo potolfo seminole. Moen poesia mogan idinokisukis mo mochimi sagada misia negeskas. Oh God, whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Under Elections and Appointments, consideration of possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Brandy Adams to the Library Board for a two-year term to fill the position recently completed by Marilyn Stewart.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watland.
Yes.
Susan Hammond.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I guess under appearances, we have Bob Dillon to go over the city's most recent financial audit and present the June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen audited financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmen. We recently completed the June thirty audit and issued an unqualified opinion, which is good. We don't have any qualifications or opinion of the financial statements. Kind of wanted to go over what's changed this year as opposed to prior years. There's been some new accounting standards that were issued that related to pension liabilities that had a fairly big impact on your financial scores. So, the police and fire pensions are ran by the state for all the police department and for all the municipalities, but due to the way it's set up, the government accounting standards is requiring that you book the liabilities for those police and fire pensions on the city's financial statements. And so that resulted in about a three and a half million dollar adjustment on liability that's happened to be set up on your financial statements. Like to hit just a couple of highlights and then try to answer any questions you might have. So your sales tax went up about one percent over the prior year. And you had carryover funds in the general fund, about four hundred and eighty thousand, which would be nice if it was higher than that. Four hundred and eighty thousand's about eight percent of your normal annual expenses out of the general fund. We'd like to see it up closer to fifteen or twenty percent a year. This is your surplus that you're carrying over from one year to the next. Like I said, you had a three and a half million dollar adjustment to set up pension liabilities. A lot of this pension liability, it's a, it's an estimate, it's an actuarial calculation. The actuaries calculate future pension costs and determine this liability. But a lot of the estimate is based on how the pool's investments do, so mainly stocks and bonds. But if there's just even like a one percent change to those investment results, it can have dramatic change, several hundred thousand dollar change to up or down in that pension liability. So, I just think it's important that that gets pointed out so that you know where the liability is and you know how it's affected.
Why did they change?
This has been kind of ongoing for, they've been, they've been looking at changing this for the last three or four years. And it's set by the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is the, they said this is not just affecting Oklahoma, it's affecting all the pension liabilities for every municipality across the nation. And to give you kind of an idea of how prolific they are in doing these changes, this is number sixty-eight. So, it's like a lot of things that are government-related, it just keeps growing and growing. This, but I wanted to point it out because this is a major change. And a lot of the funding comes from the state. Your insurance commissions pay a portion of this, but the way it's set up, it's considered a, it's not considered a special funding situation, which requires, since it's not a special funding situation, the city, at the end of the day, if everything went to put in the system, you're responsible for your portion of that liability. I mean, I can't imagine that happening, but you know, that...
In other words, if the state goes broke, we get stuck with their debt.
Kind of, well, stuck with this debt.
That's part of their debt.
Okay.
What else is needed?
What else to do?
Are, are cities changing the way they're, they're, they're doing anything?
You know, there's not much you can do related to the police and fire pension. It, it is what it is. A lot of cities have defined benefit plans for their non-unionized employees also. Some do. Seminole's not in that situation. And if you have a defined contribution plan, which is more or less like your 401K plan on the outside. So, and a lot of cities that have these defined benefit plans are looking at capping those and setting up a defined contribution plan for the future, but that doesn't affect Seminole. Any question that, I hope you had a chance to audit, like seventy or eighty pages long. Hope you had a chance to at least flip through. Each year, we have any recommendations, we sit down with management, Steve and Jay and whoever else might be involved and go over what are recommendations they have.
Based on what you've reported for this year, given the present status of the economy, do you expect that we will not be as well off next year?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's hard for me to say that, but so much for municipality is pretty basic. It's sales tax and it's utilities. That, maybe some property tax, but that's pretty much what affects your revenue side. And so on the expense side, normally it's seventy-five to eighty percent related to labor costs. And so those are the big items you got to look at. And like I said, your sales tax went up one percent last year. Well, I bet your labor costs, if you count not just the cost of the salary, but every insurance and everything else related to it, I bet it went up more than one percent. So, you know, everybody's getting squeezed. And that's why I mentioned what the carryover was from year to year. It's, it's pretty tight.
Was the majority of that one percent in the first quarter of this year?
I don't know the answer.
That's, that one percent surprised me with, you know, Seminole being an oilfield community, that one percent increase surprised me.
It's definitely got to hurt to be in the oilfield, no doubt about it. Any questions or questions about the financial statements or what we do in an audit itself?
Bob, could I go back to the pension system for just a second? This is a question I probably should have asked before now. Given the fact that we're being dealt the liability, is there any provision for us to have any oversight over their investments in the pension fund?
No, well, they have a board set up. They have a board at the police pension and fire pension. And that would be their responsibility to make investment policy decisions. You don't have the ability like you do in some of your other plans where you can say, "I want to be in this sector, or this sector, or this sector." The investment committees don't make all those decisions. It's really, the fire pension is one that's having, has the greatest unfunded position right now. The police pension is actually just about even.
Say that again, sorry. The fire?
The fire pension for uniform firefighters, their pension plan is underfunded. And it's underfunded by about, at the end of last year, it was about two point eight million. But the police pension actually is about breaking even. It doesn't really, at the end of June, it did not have a liability.
Is that pension in mutual funds or?
It's in, there's actually a footnote that kind of gives some summaries, but...
But they have a board that makes the decisions how they...
Yeah, they got a board.
Yeah.
So, if you go to page forty-five, that's, that'll show you kind of asset classes for the force pension plan. So forty-five has asset classes for the police pension. They have percentages of how much is in fixed income, kind of in real estate and international and so forth. And then for the fire pension, it's on page forty-nine and it has similar table that shows outside. It's, you know, this has been out there forever. It's just that we're now required to start reporting these liabilities. It's probably a good thing. But not a whole lot the city can do. It's not like you really set up to increase your contribution. I mean, the contribution rate is set by the state and it's, I think it's thirteen, fourteen percent on those two plans. And, and the employees are paying a portion too. Eight percent of their salary goes into these pension plans also. And then the state's kicking in money too.
Yeah, there's a monster legal battle that will happen if this ever occurs.
If, if, I, I just can't imagine. It's just kind of the nature of the way it's set up and the way the standards are written that is requiring us to report this on the city's financial statement.
Yeah, from time to time, it's, it's unique, but it does happen. The state government, the legislature, will dip into these pension funds and fund other sectors. And so the legal battle that I'm speaking of would be between us and the state legislature for, "Look, you're asking us to cover this liability. You dipped into that pension fund. It's not our problem that you did that." So there would be a battle.
Statewide, I mean, you're just a little sliver of that plane compared to Oklahoma City and Tulsa more and some of those other...
But our sliver means more.
Huh?
Yeah.
But that's our sliver.
Well, it's sort of like Congress dipping into our social security and taking that money out and putting a bunch of IOUs in, isn't it?
Fortunately, there is some assets in these plans, so it's maybe a little different.
Which is not with the federal government.
Are there any other questions for him?
Well, and I'd like to commend the staff that, you know, we've done this audit for many years and the staff is always very helpful. The books are, are kept in good shape. Most of the entries that, that we have are accrual type entry, year-end entries that are adjusting from your, from your budget to the financial statement standards that we have to have in here. So Jay and Steve and their staff have always done a great job.
Please don't tell me.
Thank you.
Don't tell me.
Bob's our Coach Billichek.
Are there any other appearances or petitions from the audience? Under Ordinances, number one, consideration of possible action to approve ordinance number one-one-nine-zero, an ordinance rezoning property located west of four hundred East Highway nine from A-one agricultural to C-two general commercial as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Mayor, we've got several people that, if you choose to take action on it tonight, that I think are here to speak to the matter.
Would you like to speak?
Can we go first?
If you would like to, that would be great.
Here, House members, I'm here to represent myself as a landowner to the northwest corner of the property that is being proposed to be rezoned. This came before the Planning Commission, the first of May. I made it to that meeting, voiced my objection. It was tabled. For whatever reason, I kept trying to get in line and realized I was going to go on the next Planning Commission agenda. I did, so I was unfortunately not there, so I'm here for you now, voicing my objection to the rezoning. And the rezoning is, I understand, for the purpose of building a dog kennel or a dog pet resort that would be on the northwest corner of that property. My bedroom is on my southeast corner of my property, which is within eyesight distance of where this proposal is going to be. I understand that they're going to try to keep the dogs contained inside at night to hold down the barking, so the noise won't be great. I've since heard that maybe they're going to put up a privacy fence, move the property or move the building maybe a little bit south of where the proposed is. But if you look at that little narrow strip, and if you've been out there, there's not much land that's usable out there. Most of it's in the flood plain. It's a very narrow strip of land. It's about a hundred and eleven feet in width and about a eighth of a, about a, you know, fifth of a mile long. And they're proposing to build way back in the back part, which is the usable land for them. This property, a little history, this property was purchased by Dan Wallace years ago from an individual by the name of Warren Thomas, about thirteen point some acres. He acquired that just to get and free access for that twenty acres that he owned that the Tates have subsequently bought along with that strip of land. And like I said, the original intent was just for a public access. Before then, he had to come back around behind L U circle and circle back around to get to it on private property. So therefore, I kind of object to the kennel being built for my own peace and quiet and safety. The noise, maybe the smell, I don't know. The dust is going to be kicked up on that road from the people going in and out to pick up their, drop their animals off. Because I understand it does not have to be hard-surfaced if there's not enough employees. So you're talking about about a fifth of a mile of gravel or dirt road. Second of all, I guess maybe I'm the only one that kind of gets bothered about spot zoning. We're taking a piece of land that's zoned agricultural, it's agriculture on both sides of it now. To the west, Dunigan's owned that. To the east, the S E D C owns that. And then on past that is where the Seminole Tribe owns their land. I would think that if we're going to rezone, and I understand the twenty-thirty plan kind of wants to use that corridor for future commercial property. And I think if we're going to rezone that piece of property, we ought to look at rezoning that along with the S E D C. And I know the Tri, the Seminole Nation, excuse me, would like to have their land rezoned also. So I think that if, at the best, that it needs to be set on an agenda where all three of those are put together for a common good for the city of Seminole to use those three commercial properties to, you know, so there does not spot zoning. We don't come back and say, "Well, that's C-two and we're going to do C-one," or "We're going to do something else." And I guess the Seminole Nation still are one. I'm not sure I get what that, the rest of this is agricultural property. And that's basically what I, what I, you know, my objections are. First of all, it's the rezoning and to put the dog kennel in. I understand that they're up against a tight spot to put, to find some land without doing some major dirt work. The only other spot would be up by the road and it falls pretty fast, so I would, I would request that it not be rezoned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
Tim Tate, I'm the owner of the property. We had had, of course, Mr. Nelson, we've been neighbors for quite a time, quite a long time. In the picking the location to build the pet resort, we actually had moved it further south in consideration before we ever come to the meeting the first time, just in consideration where his house is. In building that, it's going to take quite a bit more dirt work, cost on our part, in fact, that happened, but that was in consideration for Steve and his family. As far as the noise factor, of course, that place, you know, has been a staple for quite a few years, you know, the trailer park and things there, there's quite a few animals in that area anyway. So as far as the noise factor, I don't personally see it as a more noise than what they're actually... It's not. The tolerant test that actually proposed, their dogs would actually be taken out and there would be an exercise time, we brought back in each of them, have their own room. It's, pet resort, each one of them would actually be have their own room. There would be a run, but as far as the exercise time, that would be a time that have somebody with them. Staff would actually take them out. So as far as, you know, I understand the concern, you know, with the consideration that we've made, try to make that, we want to be a good neighbor. And, you know, I really encourage my children, any other kids that I'm around, to stay in Seminole and build in Seminole. It's important to me. And if we can't make way for our kids, then they're going to go off to other cities to do things. And it's important we can try to, if you're going to have your dream, start your dream and have a place to do it. And we would just like to see this thing passed. It's part of property we own, we want to see it develop and other development here in Seminole. We've done a ton of other things in Seminole. It would be done with the spirit of excellence, something that the Seminole would be proud of. And I'd just like an opportunity for them to be able to have that rezon and be able to proceed with that.
Is there anyone else who would like to address that? Do I have a motion or are there any questions I should ask? Are there any questions?
Yes. How much distance between, Tim, how much distance between where the pet resort is going to be and the back of the Nelson's property?
I think, I don't have the paper with me, but I think it's three hundred and twenty feet, I think, the area that fell in. And it actually got the edge of this property and up the house as far as the distance.
Okay, because I heard a hundred and fifty yards and that's a lot of space. It's not that vast.
Three hundred and fifty yards.
That would be building, building to building.
So that is about...
Forty-four.
Four hundred and fifty.
Tim, you, you, I went out and looked at the property from the first place, the first meeting that we had, and you did move it south. And Sharon drew it on the little map and I took it back to the office and showed it to Steve. And where the little orange flags are, is that, is that where you think that, that the property is going to be built at?
That did, we are where the building was. And we've got, there's not going to be a lot of parking or any of that stuff. So, you know, if we can get it in there, get it where we can build it, don't have our, nothing, the drainage and, you know, the drainage out front, that probably is a blacktop, we get that, we just go out drainage. To get it where it's at, Tim, is, you know, in consideration where we have other land that basically feel where it wouldn't be any problem, you know. Where we're putting it is the worst place for us, but the best place for our neighbors. And so that's the reason why we put it in that area and try to make it work is our hardest.
Is there a reason why you didn't put it up closer to the highway?
Tim, when it falls off, I mean, there's just another way.
Yeah, we, I understand, I looked at that and I kind of see what you're talking about.
There's another way. I don't think that, you know, you could put it up at the highway. It just falls off too much and it's just, that'd be a bad call. And plus, where it's at is, as far as if you're going to have a dog run and stuff, you're going to take animals and things out. If you was to get one loose and you're going to have something on the highway, you know, we would have a, probably put a gate up there at the beginning of that road just to be able to give that, you know, safety zone protection for when they walk the dogs.
That, we, I came and talked to Sharon today about it and she drawed on the little map where, where the post building was going to be. And it was, and Steve brought this up, we talked about it at the office. The tree, there's a tree like an elm or right there, kind of in the middle where your building's going to be. And where she drew it on the map, her spot was going to be south of that tree a little ways. So there's some discrepancy from what I saw of where the little orange flags was and where she drew it on the map. Is the flags about where you're going to do it?
We're wanting, we're asking to rezone from the gate where Dan built the white gate forward and take that. We, we want to, if we have to move it that far south, there's a drainage in there that we're going to have to, you know, try to begin with.
Yes, yes.
And, I mean, you've seen it.
Yes.
Where we're, where we're at, we're asking to rezone that because I would like it in the, there would be some parking and things on the north side of that building, Tim. But on the north side of that tree would be the, probably the best location for us at the time of where we're at right now.
For the building?
The building, yes. You know, which is probably thirty feet, twenty feet, maybe, whatever that, whatever that is. I'd like to leave the tree there.
Build around it.
Yeah, build around it. Yeah, build around it, to get out the tree.
Tim, what kinda capacity, how many dogs are you talking about?
You know...
Ten, is it ten sweet?
Ten of the, where the...
A suite, not a kennel, right?
They got new language for this now, you know, so. Uh, I can ask Tessa to come up, she can give you kind of an overview of a little bit of that, if that would, if you need that or not.
I mean, I, I think that would be good from the standpoint, you know, I mean, when you were talking about, I'm trying, you know, we're talking twenty dogs, fifty dogs, hundred dogs, you know? But ten dogs is, doesn't seem like a lot.
You might have been some terrible artist. No, you're not.
It was a cemetery at one time.
Really?
Yeah, that whole area was.
Well, wait a minute, are there still bodies?
No, they dug it up and moved it a long time ago. There's spirits out there though.
Oh, man.
Oh, here we go.
Instiginnies.
Oh, instiginnies.
Yes, ma'am.
Here we go.
If you would proceed, ignore them.
Hurry, before this goes off.
Dogwood Lodge is a ten suite, um, doggy hotel. And it includes an indoor, indoor, we have four foot by eight foot long run. And they have access to go to their run during the daytime if the owner wishes for them to do that. Some little dogs, they want one out during the day. That run is twelve feet long by four feet, it's covered. So the, um, the building itself is twenty-four feet by forty, the area is forty by forty. And that includes our porch and our runs on the backside. Um, that gives us enough parking in front of our building. So, uh, I think that whole from the width of that, that we're wanting to rezon is seventy-two feet. And so that allows us to park, have our building and have, uh, five to ten foot from the fence on the backside, the west side of the building. And our, um, our, our little big bark part, where, uh, you know, they'll have access to that during the day, the staff will take them out, that will fall off to the south side. So, um, that will be further away from Mr. Nelson's and the building will catch any of that noise and that will be toward the highway, so we're...
Um, I have, um, something to say about this. If I am with Tim, we want our young children to start, young adults, to, to stay in Seminole and start a business. We want to encourage that and I admire your husband's side. On the other hand, our homes are our haven. And when you come home from a day of work or from a stressful day, you want to have comfort and peace in your house. So we have a balance here. What, is there any compromise that we can do? Is there any other place that you might consider? So you wouldn't be at all bothering, there's a lot of houses there, you know? You know, I'm thinking, is there a compromise? Is there another location?
Within five hundred feet, how many houses will be of this building?
Five hundred feet, the Nelson, uh, the Dunigan, I still live there and, uh, I probably got two.
So two?
No, no, where, where the five hundred feet gets across the highway and I drive on tracks, I was telling you, it's a, it's a...
About, we're talking less than five houses, for the most part. And even, yes, sir?
And, and Tim Jackson, my neighbor up there, he, he has, uh, he has a house, two, two houses, then we get into the trailer park up there.
Sure. And so, I mean...
There's maybe a handful.
And so part of what we're also looking at, this area also comes right off the highway, correct? So people living within the area of this building are gonna be within five hundred feet of the highway already, correct? So they already have highway noise. And so to me, the best place to build commercial is on the road, on the highway. And so if you're building it in land that is adjacent or abuts the highway, that is kinda by definition where you like to see commercial property go. And I, I think the problem is, is, you know, where my house is, I have, uh, air pumping supply in my front yard. Well, you know, initially, you know, I think part of it is, is kinda like Tim has said, and also I have an area of land that is completely surrounded on three sides by Tim. It's kinda like he said, the spirit of the things that they've done here in town, I don't anticipate that he's gonna go put something up there that would be intrusive upon his neighbors, that would, that would be a bad neighbor. And so from that standpoint of, of living and having land where he has land around me, I would have no objections to him putting something there if he's, you know, looking at trying to move the building as far away as, as legitimately you can. I mean, you don't wanna take a, a project and quadruple the cost just to get the dirt work. And so part of it is, is no matter where you build, you're gonna have areas that someone is gonna be offended and doesn't want it there. And so, I mean, we're looking at less than a handful of houses that are already juxtapositional to the highway that already have noise. And so, you know, the only question I have is, you know, when can we make reservations? That's, that's what I'm looking at. And so, you know, I think it's a good, yes, sir?
I've got one more comment about that also. And I understand they're gonna be good neighbors, they're gonna do that, but in two years, six months, he's profitable and he sells it to somebody. When we rezon it, now I'm gonna live with whatever those new owners wanna come up with. Whether they wanna keep him inside, whether they wanna keep him outside.
Right.
So I have to look at that. And you say just ten dogs, how would you like to have your neighbor have ten dogs out your bedroom window?
I live next door to Wrangler.
Okay, well, if you did, you know...
Yeah, well, I mean, part of the...
Most people in town, I think, place their, their dog maximum in the backyard.
But my question is this, it's already zoned agriculture, correct?
Yep.
Is that by definition not animals and crops? So he theoretically could...
Not for what they're...
Not commercially, I understand that. But if they wanted to put a hundred cows right next to you, they could currently do that, correct?
I would, I would welcome that. We have, I've had their horses, you know, I would give them promise.
Sure, okay.
They, they don't make noise at night because they're, they live there, they're not in a strange location.
Sure.
Here all, and we've got lots of wild animals run up and down to the property there, they have coyotes run up and down to it all night long.
Sure.
That's my comment, this, you know, when, when they're no longer owners then, I'm gonna, if this passes, then I'm gonna have to live with whoever else takes over.
Yes, sir.
Now, it's my understanding that the planning commission did recommend this. Corinne?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments for the... Do I have a motion? If there is no motion, it will die.
I'd make a motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
If, if the big concern is about them selling it for something else and maybe adding that, is there something we can do, like we've done in the past, where we rezon it for that business? And, I mean, and it's limited to the ten dogs or would that be some separate ordinance we'd have to do? To prevent that from happening in the future?
That is, what's the term for that, like a special, uh, use permit?
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit. Yes, sir?
You know, when you're, when you're in a business, especially in a small town, I don't mind getting, I wanna do what pleases everybody. But also, we're the ones that have to try to make a living, this is what I do. So if you, to be able to grow, I mean, I don't wanna get it where we're just so hemmed in, this is, you know, you normally use, you know, have five dogs, ten dogs. And if we had to go to sell, we have, you know, problems doing that and, uh, some of that just, uh, you know, people's draining and...
Sure.
In other words, you would have to re-permit every, every time they have a, a new buyer on the building?
I currently have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second, can we please get a roll call vote, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
No.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Wow. This is a really hot seat, you know? I'm gonna go with the recommendation by the planning commission and, uh, say yes.
Tim Poplin?
With all due respect to the council, I personally know both parties involved. I work with Steve, Tim and I are brothers in Christ. He preached my mother's funeral. I'm caught in the middle in this deal. And sometimes, we gotta take our personal feelings out of it and do what's best for the city. But I think the best for the council and, and the position that I have between my people, I'm gonna have to abstain from the vote. I, I've, I've thought a lot about this and it's been tough. And, uh, I hope y'all appreciate that, but I have to abstain, due to personal feelings.
John Kramer?
No.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion did not pass.
Why's that?
I'm sorry, motion passed.
Forty-two.
Yes, it did.
Uh, I, hang on just a second.
It's four to three, actually.
Before we go with that, isn't there a clause where it has to pass by a certain majority on a zoning change? Did we run into that one time before?
I'm, I'm not aware of that.
I think we rezoned something and it was a situation kinda like this where part of us didn't. And I think, I think it was on the co- over out by the Co-Plasure property. And he looked up something and it has to pass by like a super major, I mean, we may need to double check that before they go forward with it.
We'll, we'll check into that. Brad's not here, uh, obviously, we, we'll run it by him before any permits are pulled or anything of that nature.
For the record, the final vote was four to three because of an extension.
It counts as a no.
It counts as a no vote, correct?
Correct. You did know that, correct, Tim?
No, sir, but it is what it is.
Sure. It passes four to three.
Current business number two, consideration possible action to approve the client services agreement with Credit Serv- Systems International Incorporated for collection of past due customer accounts related to the ambulance service.
Yes, from time to time, we'll have, uh, we'll have accounts that are in arrears. Uh, we've had other people work on these accounts before. Um, I, I think this is a good deal for us. It, it will likely result in more, more money in our coffers that, uh, has been billed out. So I would encourage us to execute this.
So the way the wording was, just to verify, this would come from, the referrals would come from the city and not our current billing company, is that correct?
Let's get Brian up here, he's the professional on this.
It's a combination of both. Intermedix is our billing company that we have now. Those guys are responsible for collecting certain, well, collecting all of our money. We have accounts that we consider to be dead accounts, there's no movement on it. This company at that point is gonna take those accounts that will be referred to by us in Intermedix. Uh, this is another way for us to obtain our money that is not yet to be overtaken. These people also do collections for IMSA out of Oklahoma City, Tulsa. They also do collections for O A G, Oklahoma National Gas. They came well recommended and, uh, we feel like this is gonna push us over the top, so we'll give the rest of our money.
But it, but in reading it, it said client, and I may have missed it, but it did clarify client being the city or our billing company or does it...
We are the client.
Okay.
These guys are gonna work inter... What happens is we get a weekly report from Intermedix, then we also get a monthly report. At the end of that month, if that account is ninety days old, we automatically ship that off. It can either be us or Intermedix, but we are the client.
Motion?
I'd move to approve, ten seconds.
Second.
Roll call?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three.
Number three, consideration possible action to approve a fifteen thousand dollar grant awarded from the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Medicine, or, excuse me, Emergency Medicine Management.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration impossible action to approve a thirty thousand dollar grant awarded from the Avidus Foundation.
Move to approve. Never turn down money.
Roll call, please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, discussion possible action regarding construction of a turn lane into the East Gate addition from Highway nine.
Yeah, how bad do you want it turned?
Okay, just to bring everyone to speed, uh, last month, the city council heard, uh, heard about the possibility of a turn lane going into East Gate. And, uh, I was approached and asked by a council member to give us a heat map of where the accidents are occurring or have occurred in the last year in Seminole. So what we've done here is we've, we've given you a, a very broad, uh, blow up of the city. Uh, each one of these little dots is, uh, is an accident that occurred. The brighter areas are where more than multiple, uh, more than one accident has occurred. So you can see Walmart parking lot is a hotspot. By far, our, our worst area is at nine and ninety-nine. A little bit out here in, in front of the college. And then, of course, the Strathers and Milt Phillips area is, you can kinda see. We can zoom in on any of these that you would like to zoom in on. I think, uh, one of the primary concerns would, would be this, we've talked several times about this stoplight. Uh, that, I believe it only had two accidents this year. And Sharon, can you turn off the, let's just turn off the accidents late and look at the injuries? Okay, so, uh, the red dots will signify multiple injuries. Now, that may be one accident with two people hurt, or it may be actually multiple accidents with more than one individual has been hurt at that intersection. You can see here that that's, there's been a couple of injuries here. Uh, one at the spot that we're talking about at East Gate and then several throughout, uh, I think this is... Al- also, these down here do not have turn lanes either. So, uh, I'll open it up if you wanna zoom in on any areas, uh, or if you wanna, go ahead and zoom in on the subject area and we'll go from there. Uh, while, while Sharon's doing that, I will tell you that we had, uh, Steve Shaw give us an estimate. Uh, his estimator's still not finished with it. I asked him, okay, I'm down to the wire here, I need to know a ballpark. And he said, well, uh, I think you're probably looking at two hundred and twelve thousand dollars to do the turn lane that we were talking about doing last time. So, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars will get us a left turn lane. Now, that may fluctuate a little bit once the estimator gives us the final, final.
Was it only like eighty thousand when we first looked at it?
I think it was a hundred and sixty-nine.
Was that just for one or both?
Uh, I think, I...
Cause we were looking at the one going into William Boulevard and East Gate.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall. That's been a couple of days ago. Uh, but, no, he, what he said was two hundred and twelve thousand. And Chris, I'll get you some clarification on that. Chris, I'll get you some clarification on that. He, he may have misunderstood and if there were two in it, then I'll get that clarification as well.
Okay, because, uh, I mean, the worst issue is when you have more than one car trying to cross those lanes into the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
That's when you get people stopped on the interstate. I've seen people slam on the brakes behind me as I'm going into the neighborhood. And that's where, you know, I mean, that's the concern. I guess there was a wreck there where somebody was actually, you know, hit finally.
Right.
And, uh-
So are we talking about just the one going into this or you want, want us to look at the Williams as well?
Well, both of them are gonna depend, I guess, depend on the funds they, being available and given that our sales taxes drop like it has this year.
Right.
That we might have to do one at a time if we've been able to do them. But, uh-
Steve, that being a state highway, the state's not involved in any way, it won't help us anyway.
No. Now, if you get, uh, if you get into some of the heat deal that we've got over here on, on this intersection, they'll, they will come in and do something. Especially where fatalities are involved, so.
Part of this stems from, and perhaps only some people who lived back there when Walmart was being thrown around to be built, there were, you know, there were a number of people in the neighborhood who were not happy. This was before I was on council, but they weren't exactly happy with Walmart going out there. And one of the things that was thrown out there was perhaps we can get you turn lanes into the neighborhood. And that's never happened.
From Walmart or from the city council?
From, I think, well, I just assumed not come. I think it was from the city more or less. So we never talked directly, it was Walmart that I, that I'm aware of, but it was, I mean, there was never not a vote, it was never thrown. I mean, it was just in one of, one of the discussions, it was put out there that there could be, possibly be some turn lanes. But I don't know that the city ever took it after that. When I came on council, I'd asked, you know, that we take a look at it and that's when we got those costs originally, which has probably been about ten years ago now.
Which one, where are you thinking about putting a turn lane in, Steve? Which, which intersection there? There would be the storage buildings, I think. Is that where the most traffic comes in at?
I think it's probably split between William Boulevard and East Gate.
Yeah. Looks like there's a lot more houses back-
Yeah, I think you're, you're-
Farther east.
Yeah, you're gonna have more people coming in this intersection because there, there are a total of more houses. You got a, a pretty decent amount here as well.
But at least if you had a turn lane on one of them, even if you live a little bit more on the west side, you would at least have a safe way to go in. You know, you may have to go around it, you know, an extra two hundred feet, but at least you would have a safe place to turn.
What's the amount again?
Two hundred and twelve thousand was the estimate.
And that's per intersection?
Well, that was my understanding. I, I owe an explanation. I didn't even ask. I said, what is the turn lane going into that? And he said two hundred and twelve thousand. He estimated a hundred and sixty-nine thousand last time. Chris recalls that that was for two. One on Williams Boulevard and the other one here. It's the same guy that's estimating it this time. So he may have misunderstood my question. My question was one turn lane going into East Gate. So I need to clarify that before I nail it down.
Do we know what the length of that is?
Uh, I did not bring the, the, the section, I'm sorry. But it's, it's pretty standard. It's, it's gonna be basically what you see up in some of these other areas that do have the turn lane.
If this were approved, where would the funds come from, Steve?
From your four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar reserve.
Okay.
Wow.
Okay.
But that's only if it's done this year, correct?
That's right. I mean, they're, to my knowledge, this is not an emergency, other than the people that are turning in there are very uncomfortable with it. As are the people over in the null addition that are doing the same thing.
Could be done next year and then put on the budget in some way.
Yes, absolutely. That's completely up to you guys. Or we can stop some of the things that we're doing now and, and deal with this. You tell me what's your pleasure and we'll get on.
Well, we don't have a very big surplus. But then again, on the other hand, how much is our life worth, you know? It's another, another problem.
And I should also say this, I don't think we've ever had an audit where they said we had enough in the reserve.
Yeah.
But with our short form that we're having now, we have to be careful what we do here.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I want, I want, and I've wanted them since I've been on council, I've brought them several times. However, knowing our situation, I think before we could, you know, especially then this year, we would have to take a look at where we're at now. I think we're probably gonna end up having to do that anyway, from the looks of the sales tax. Correct. Well, the other thing is how much money are you truly looking at? Is it one lane? Is it two? Is it two hundred and twenty? Is it, you know, half of that, one ten? Is it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna tell you with eighty percent confidence that that's two hundred and twelve for one, one turn lane. May I suggest that we get the answer to that question and bring it back for the next council meeting and then we can go from there?
So I took that as a motion to table?
I'll make your motion.
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You can leave that map up if you want to. We might need it for this next, uh-
Oh, okay.
Oh, you can't see?
No.
It's just one more, just one more thing.
On number six. On the addendum, discussion possible action regarding speed limits on state highways within Seminole's city limits.
Okay, I, I kinda asked that we talk about this some more on the speed limits. We had lowered that in front of Walmart to forty-five, which lowering it from fifty to forty-five at that intersection, I don't know that it did tons of good. I think as an alternative to the turn lanes for now, I think if we drop the speed limit, that will help some of that anxiety. As I sit here and I'm thinking all the way to Norman, you know, you know, I've gone a little further on the other side of Norman, you know, on Highway nine, maybe into Blanchard or something, but, and then all the way to, I think Stigler going the other way. And I don't know of one community where you can drive fifty miles an hour through their community. You come in north and south on, on ninety-nine, I think you drop to forty-five maybe?
Right.
And you turn and go fifty. Which brings another issue. We're sitting at stoplights right there and I'm sitting there a number of times and I'm watching trucks barrel through probably doing fifty or fifty-five miles an hour to beat that light. And my light or the light in the person in front of me is already turned green. So if they're not paying attention and just pull out there, they're creamed. And I don't know if that's why some of these wrecks at that intersection, especially nine and ninety-nine have occurred. But I'm thinking perhaps we slow, I, I don't think we need to be above, say, forty in this town on the speed limits, period. I mean, that's just my own opinion. But I'm thinking if those stoplights like that, it ought to be even slowed down to thirty-five or thirty coming into them where those truckers can't try to beat that light. That is, you know, I, I've seen that more than once and it's just a matter of time before somebody doesn't see that truck and their light turns green and they go. And you gotta, you gotta semi pulling a load, driving fifty, fifty-five miles an hour, that creams someone and kills them.
I agree. I've seen them barrel through.
My question, is that a legal problem or an enforcement problem?
I don't think it matters at that speed.
What I'm saying though is if the speed limit's twenty, people are gonna try to make the light. Especially if I'm driving that, so I gotta, you know, hurry up and get through them. So you either run a red light or you don't. That's against the law. So I don't matter what the speed limit is to get up to there.
Well, I mean, I think it's gonna, you know, word can maybe get out if we sit there and give everybody a ticket who does it. I mean, if that's what we wanna do, but I still think that that also helps that, you know, the traffic, you know, especially that corridor. I mean, when that was set at fifty miles an hour also, you gotta think, this was done years ago. You know, town didn't go out that far. You know, there was no Walmart, there was no nursing home, the junior college, you know, and my lifetime's probably tripled in size. There was no hospital there on the other side, didn't have a museum, Wrangler wasn't out there. I mean-
Steve, if we are looking at actually changing the, the speed limit, is that something that has to go through the state and be approved at the state? Or who all does that have to go through to change the speed on a state highway?
Right, so what we would have to do is ask, uh, ODOT by letter to come do a traffic study on the roads that are, are the subject. And we can add as many roads as we want. And they would come back with a, a speed limit reduction or not. So what we would do is show them the heat maps and things like that.
So we don't pick a speed that we would like to see it? We basically say, we'd like to see that reduced?
Well, more than likely, what they're going to do is ask us our preferred speed. So if we, if we say twenty miles an hour on Highway nine, they're going to come back and say, well, we, no, we're gonna drop it to forty-five. They may look at it if we request forty-five and say, yes, that's, that's adequate. They may say that, look, that's a state highway, it's divided, uh, judging from the severity and the number of crashes that you've had, it, it justifies a speed limit of fifty. So, but they're, they do have to have a traffic study and it does have to meet their approval.
But that's a study we have to have anyway, is that correct? If we change it?
If you change it, yes, sir.
Okay, well, let's just request the study and see what it come up with.
And I would like to, I would like to-
Do you wanna put a speed with it?
Well, I would like to add one more thing as far as the stoplights. We talked about the enforcement on that. But part of that, I think, is if you've got a trucker driving fifty miles an hour and they're pulling a load, it doesn't matter. That light turns yellow, they may not be able to stop that load. I mean, I think that needs to be slowed down going into that intersect, that intersection in particular altogether. Now, I don't even, you know, I mean, we've gotta send it to the state and all of that first anyway, so we can't really change it tonight, but another reason I, you know, I wanted some opinions. I thought, in addition to the stoplight, I originally thought about having this put on there because of the, the turn lanes and whether or not we could afford to do those at this time. So I thought that stretch there would definitely, you know, slowing down that traffic might-
No, in front of Walmart, we're forty-five, right?
Yes.
And then when you get to where it goes back up?
I guess just past the light, it goes back up on the way out of town.
Is there a sign that shows that it goes back up?
No, it's not far, it's not far. It may be, I don't even know if it's all the way to East Gate before it goes back up to fifty.
It goes up before East Gate.
Right about the storage building.
I mean, it's just a small section where it's dropped.
And it's fifty, right?
Yes.
It goes back to fifty.
Well, I would, I would move that we ask the state to look at it.
That's correct. We have to do that.
Do we need to come up with what we perceive as a speed or just have them-
No. Oh, well, you can do that in your motion, but that, actually, that would be good if we-
I mean, we, we have some others. I mean, any, what are you guys, I mean, you guys all live back there. What do you, I mean, Tim? What are you guys? Actually, you guys living back there, do you guys have anything to say about the, you know?
Easy. We don't want you talking about your wife and her lead foot.
She's one of the driving seventy-five mile an hour. I don't know that's a problem. Actually, those turn lanes, one of that addition, I mean, if you cringe every time you go to, you go to, I mean, if you, if you don't have room, you're always trying to get over. If somebody's coming from the east, if you're coming west, I always try to get over enough for somebody from behind me to get where you got two cars, which is really a lead. But you're trying to get everybody where they don't have to get stacked just one night. It's, it's, uh, it's gonna be a hard one.
It, it's the same way where I go in.
Yeah.
You're always sharing the same, same issue. All those places, neither of us.
Three seventy-seven coming to Brahms from north going south. I mean, you know, Judge Snow, he had the green light. And I think that's where the brightest spot was that I've noticed on that. I think we need to slow them down up there and patrol it. And I think that's just as important as what we're talking about East Gate and Walmart.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if we're gonna have a study by ODOT, why don't we include that area also?
Oh, I, I would include that in my motion.
Yeah.
So what are we, what are you looking for, forty?
Well, another place we saw, and it wasn't as major, but was the Strather Harvey Road intersection. And that's, I mean, that's, that's fifty miles an hour also. And that is a pain to get across there sometimes. And if that was a little bit slower, I mean, that's another state highway. If that was a little slower, it might be a little easier to get in and off, you know?
If it were so expensive, I'd say put a stoplight there.
Yes.
Anyway, the, the, I just wanted to get the conversation started because that, you know, this, like I say, this, this one council member's opinion right here.
What would you like to say for the speed limit, Chris? What would you suggest?
I don't think the fifty to forty-five made a whole lot of difference. I'm thinking forty. And I'm really thinking going into those stoplights, we even slow them down to maybe thirty. Where if those truckers do get a yellow light, they're more likely to be able to stop than to have to barrel on through.
Yeah, but that's basically north-south traffic you're looking at there.
Yeah, I, I see more of it going north-south definitely than I do the east-west.
And, and I would have to agree with what DeeDee has said over and over again. We need to bypass.
Of course, my, my question is, is if you want it to be thirty, isn't a school zone twenty-five? And that's the slowest there is? So you wanna go just five over-
These are just my opinions.
A school zone? Because I'm trying to think, most residential areas are thirty-five in Tulsa, Oklahoma City.
Okay, we'll drop it to forty and leave it at forty. I just would like to see it slower.
I'm a fan of forty-five, but whatever y'all wanna go with.
Well, my motion doesn't set a speed limit.
Well, Steve had asked if maybe we could put one in there because you're more apt to get it.
Gives me an idea. I don't, I don't need the specific. I'll just tell them we want it as low as possible.
So your motion would be to look at-
To have the state-
Wrangler Boulevard,
Do a study of that.
Harvey Road, ninety-nine. Basically, those three roads. Do I have a second?
When, could I add that, actually looking at the north traffic headed into town, I mean, that, I don't know if we need to specify on that because that's, we're talking about the trucks coming in.
Then we just look at the, the whole road, right?
Three seventy-seven.
Right, but I, this is really just Steve making sure he's not changing your motion.
Okay, so, yeah, we're looking at Highway ninety-nine from city limit to city limit, Highway nine, the same way. Harvey Road.
From Walmart to Quick Stop, or?
So I think it's too broad if you say that because our concern is the traffic coming north on three seventy-seven to Highway nine.
And going east and west on Highway nine.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was, we're really talking about that intersection from the north. Not on through town to the south, which really that, the trucks.
I see them both through there.
So I don't know how you, how you wanna word that, but that's really-
The price is the same. You can add as many as you want.
Yeah, but I'm thinking if you say north to south, they're gonna look at the whole thing and go, oh, okay, the speed limit's good. I think we're concerned about maybe starting it at, uh, at the trailer park.
Once they give us the go-ahead to lower them to a certain amount, I mean, or can they make recommendations that they're, I mean, if they're lowered anywhere? Can we just have them look at all these state roads in town and give us a recommendation?
Yes.
And then we can decide if we're gonna lower it or not ourselves? Is that how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
But you can't make it lower than what they recommend.
Right. They, they set it. They set the floor.
I've had a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Excuse, so the motion is to look at all state highways within the city limits, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And that was a second. Seconded by Jeff. Roll call, please.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Susan Hammond?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Reports, city manager.
Uh, got a lot of stuff going on right now. I guess the first thing is many of Seminole citizens will be getting a Christmas bonus this year, cash, in the form of not having to pay insurance premiums that they have in the past. Because of the work that the water department has done in laying new water lines, our fire department and the upgrades that you all have invested over the many years to get them to this point and the communication systems that are nine-one-one. Seminole is now rated as an ISO three. That is fantastic. There are, there are about thirty-six communities with that rating and above in Oklahoma out of sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-seven fire departments. We're in the top. Man, I mean, I'm just so impressed and I think they, they certainly, all of them, to pull together like they have, they deserve a big pat on the back. So if you get a chance to see any of the folks from those departments, make sure they know that you appreciate them because in the end, this will mean somewhere in the neighborhood and it, it varies by insurance carrier. But those that use the ISO, it's a, ISO stands for Insurance Service Office. And there are many, many insurance agencies that use that to set their premiums. But to put it in perspective, going into a, a three, an ISO rating of three, uh, if you're covered by any of those carriers, you will save $100 per $100,000 of property value by going to a three. So that's significant, obviously. So, uh, they've done a good job. You all, especially by allowing us to do those sorts of investments have done a great job. Uh, another Bravo to our, our crews that got the Snowman Wonderland set up. It looks Wonderland-ish. Uh, it looks really good. It's, uh, it's a special place and, uh, it continues to grow. Think we may even have another display that's rather large being delivered someday soon. Uh, we did receive and, and we've got the deed on the First Christian Church across, uh, well, there on Mike Snyder Boulevard. Um, we're, we're in the process of kind of evaluating where we're at with that and, uh, trying to decide what an appropriate tenant might look like. Uh, the reality show, uh, the, the race cars we're involved with is through for the season. And, uh, we're, we're still waiting on the street to be cleaned. I expect that will be done tomorrow. Uh, the, the sandblasting crew will come out tomorrow and hopefully have that cleaned. Uh, I know many of you are hearing both, hey, we want that to come back. We love the racing. And you're also hearing the other side, hey, that's, that's way too noisy for me. Uh, please shut it down. So, uh, there is a possibility that this may be revisited sometime in the spring or summer. And, uh, you guys may put your thinking caps on. Uh, I conveniently waited till the filing period. I knew everybody had refiled before I mentioned that. Okay, uh, our flood study is very near completion. I would expect, uh, in your January meeting, we'll probably have a set aside to have, uh, the MeShack group, who is the, the folks that you have employed to do the floodplain study, will be here in January to kind of give you their final analysis and, uh, potential solutions like turning lanes. We don't have a lot of money available to do any of the solutions they may come up with. But at least we're going to have a roadmap and we're going to be able to kind of plot our way through, uh, solving some of the flood issues that our citizens deal with. Uh, you may have noticed that we're, we are painting some of the poles downtown. Uh, it really has begun to dress it up. Just simple flat black paint does wonders on those light poles. Uh, right now, we're kind of short on staff. Our street department is having trouble staying healthy. Uh, but once they get back at full strength, I expect we're going to have even better impact. Wanted to congratulate Sharon on the Avidus grant. Great work. Good job. We love 30,000 free dollars. We do have a couple of legal issues. We are in litigation with the, uh, Ken King lawsuit. And, uh, we had our first day of trial yesterday. That, that will conclude tomorrow. Uh, and I'll be able to report on that for you next meeting. Uh, the Sigma mediation is tomorrow and, uh, we'll be going to Oklahoma City to, to hopefully work something out. That's all I have.
I want to go ahead for my part, say thank you again to Sharon. For some people that don't know, uh, the Avidus Foundation is actually out of Shawnee. I think they started just not too long, within the last 10 years. And, um, they've helped some communities around us as well. And so she'd, uh, applied to get the grant to help with the, the swimming pool. And so because of her, as Didi says, free money, $30,000. Thank you, Sharon. Ward one, Susan Hammond?
Yes. Um, I would ask all of the citizens of Seminole, all of us, to be in prayer for our community and our nation. We've got some big, deep divisions and some big challenges facing us in our future. We must start thinking beyond ourselves, compromise some of these selfish desires. And, uh, we've got to move on to build safe and productive communities for our nation and for Seminole. And, uh, asking for God's direction and his blessing is always a good thing. God bless Seminole.
Mm-hmm.
God bless America.
Ward one, Bill Watlin? Follow that up, buddy.
I, I, I would second everything that Susan has said. It's true. And we are in a time of great crisis for our nation, for our whole way of life. And we need to be aware of that and pray to God for guidance and strength and protection. But I want to say also thank you for the blessing of this community and the people and the government and all our citizens and all the people who make this a wonderful place to live.
Ward two, John Kramer?
Oh, come on, John. Keep us on a roll.
Ward three, Jeff Griffin?
Well, I'd like to encourage everyone to come out to the, uh, Snowman Wonderland. It's amazing to see the people that are out at all different times. I mean, you know, after the trams are through running, there's still people out walking at, at all different times. And so come out and enjoy the lights.
It's amazing. All the trams are having over 300 people a night, which is quite large for this city.
Did you see all the cars parked out there tonight?
Wow.
I mean, clear on the side of the road.
And we've had visitors from, I don't want to spoil deals if he's going to talk on it, but, uh, there was a couple that were passing through. They heard about it, stopped and then spent the night here in town and they were headed on to Texas.
Tim Poplin?
Uh, Tim, Steve, thanks for your time coming out and explaining everything. I think it, I'm sure it helped for the decisions. Hey, we all live here together. We'll work together, make it right. I know you guys, both of you, so I know it'll happen. But, you know, I encourage all citizens, you know, if, if you have a concern, uh, come and let us know. If you don't come and let us know, you have no complaints or no gripes. This is where it's all put on the table at. Anyway, thank you, guys.
Ward four, Chris Anson? After looking at the turn lanes over the last.
I think I've said enough.
Ward four, Didi Patterson?
Well, I'd just like to thank the staff. We're very blessed to have the people we have working for us. The police department, sheriff, or, uh, Morgan, uh, Shane Marshall has been outstanding on some of the things that we've had come before us in the last few days. And Baker, we appreciate this report. This is, this affects everyone.
That's right.
And it's very important that we have this classification. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I might add one thing. My wife and I actually, uh, were able to both be at the Christmas parade this year. And I just want to tell people that made a float, that put the Enviro church, thank you. Some of those floats were quite impressive. And I, I really enjoyed the, the parade this year. So thank you all. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?